Yes, Mrs Townsend.
Your Lordships are expecting to hear from a learned friend, Mr Elvin, and we have very much tried to keep to time. But your Lordships will remember I started just a tiny bit late.
Yes, indeed.
And he's given me one minute to make three short points. So, very, very briefly, my Lords, I frame my submissions so as to avoid so far as possible overlap, as your Lordships indicate, and to focus on the matters that were of interest to your Lordships. But it was remiss of me not even to refer to the international cases, particularly given that their author is here, listening to these proceedings. And I thought I should at least refer to them and to the fact that, not taking your Lordships to any of them, to the fact that everything I want to say about them stands and is found in the skeleton argument that responds to Friends of the Earth and to the Appellants supplementary skeleton. And that's at pages 63 to 67, in which submissions are made as to what those cases show, backed up by references to specific paragraphs in them. So I do commend those submissions to your Lordship. Second point, all the effects that were listed so eloquently by Malonard-Freund, Mr Horn, are clearly effects of the development in those cases. So, for example, the housing developments and the toings and froings relating to them. That is, the development in its operational phase. That's the language of the regulations. And planning authorities are applying it, day in, day out, to a myriad of different situations with no difficulty. And that's where the decision in this case lies, is with the language of the regulations in my submission. And finally, there is no basis in the directive or in the regulations for the notion that climate is a special case. Your Lordships will have seen from the plain words that it is amongst, as it were, environmental receptors that may be adversely affected by, or indeed affected either positively or negatively significantly, by development. This could have been a special case. It could have been marked out. Indeed, it might have been, because in 2014, the directive was amended specifically to recognise and reflect the importance of the potential for impact on the climate. But it is not a special case. There's no basis for making it one. Those are my submissions, my Lords.
Thank you very much, Mrs Townsend.
May please the Court. Lord, can I begin by setting the legal context for the question the Court is asked to answer? Because it's rather been overlooked in my respectable submission via the Appellants and the interveners' submission. And the focus on project rather overlooks the fact that when you look, and I'm sure the Court has already, at Article One of the Directive and its transposition in the 2017 regulations, the focus isn't simply on project, but on integrating the assessment of the project within the procedure for development consent. And that, of course, in English law terms, is the process for applying for planning permission. Can I take you very briefly to the Directive, which is Authorities' Bundle, page five to begin with, which is the preamble to the Directive? And if I could draw the Court's attention to paragraph six of the preamble, which makes it perfectly clear the purpose, is to integrate within development consent procedures. It isn't simply freestanding projects, but projects which are going to be assessed as part of a consenting procedure. It is perhaps a statement of the obvious, but it's important nonetheless when one comes to see what Mr Justice Holgate meant. And similarly, you see at seven, then the assessment of projects is in that context. Which is why, if you turn please to page AB7, you see in Article One, not only the definition of project, but the definition of development consent in some Article 2C, i.e. the decision of the competent authority, which entitles the developer to proceed with the project. And the tying of the two together is important in terms of assessing the question of the likely significant effect, because it is in that specific framework. And project, with respect from Malonard-Freund, for the Appellants and the intervener, project is defined as effectively physical interventions in the environment, construction and other interventions. It is not defined in terms of purpose. It's defined in terms of what the project is. And of course...
I think Miss Townsend accepted yesterday that the project included the extraction of the oil.
Oh, undoubtedly. Undoubtedly, because if Sub-Article 2C, sorry, Sub-Article 2A involving the extraction of mineral resources, it's undoubtedly...
So, do you therefore accept that the oil is, to use the phrase which you've been debating...
I'm avoiding the word product. The consequence of the development consent.
The consequence of the development consent.
The outcome of the implementation of the development.
Is that oil that was underground is now brought to the surface.
Crude oil has been extracted from the ground using the apparatus which has been permitted. Yeah, there's no dispute about that. And indeed, I'm going to take your Lordship to the way the Directive categorises projects, but the extraction of oil is a specific, well, I'll go to it now, a specific Annex One project. If the Court would turn to AB22, which is Annex One mandatory environmental impact assessment cases?
Sorry, the reference...
AB22, my Lord.
Thank you.
Sub-Paragraph 14, "The extraction of petroleum natural gas for commercial purposes where the amount extracted exceeds." And can I draw the Court's attention to the fact at Paragraph One on page AB20, crude oil refineries are a separate project? And I'm going to come to that in a moment.
Which paragraph is that?
That's Paragraph One of Annex One. And these are reflected in Schedule One to the EIA regulations. So, no doubt that the extraction of the oil and the bringing of the crude oil out of the ground, that is, it is a commercial exploitation of a mineral resource, undoubtedly. That doesn't mean the profit motive of those selling petrol to those using vehicles, or diesel rather, is necessarily relevant to the assessment of the effects of the project which entitles the development consent, and I'll come to that in a moment. But that statutory framework gives you a clear guide as to what the Directive and the regulations are trying to do. Tied in with that is a point I make in the skeleton argument, not addressed by Malonard-Freund, which is, bearing in mind the whole purpose of this is to integrate within the development consent procedures in the member states. There are requirements which you will have seen in Article Five of the Directive, page AB11, Article 5.1c, "Measures to avoid, prevent, reduce, or if possible offset", i.e. mitigation, in other words. That is reflected in Regulation 18, I think it's 3c.
3c?
Yes. Page AB48. In other words, the Directive and the regulations are looking at the development consent framework. That is to say, what can you do to mitigate the effect of the project for which consent is being granted? So, it gives a clear indication that you're looking to matters within the control of those implementing the development consent. And that ties in with what we say in our skeleton argument, with the restrictions within domestic planning control, that conditions can only be imposed on planning permissions for land within the control of the person carrying out the development or planning obligations, which, as the Supreme Court held recently in Elsie, there has got to be a clear link with the development and not merely a distant link. And so, it's not a determinative issue, but what it does is it gives you a very clear idea of what the Directive is trying to assess.
But it would impose a very tight limit, wouldn't it, if you applied control, developers' control, as a touchstone?
Lord, I'm not using it as a touchstone. I'm simply using it as an indication of what the structure of the legislation is doing.
So you're not submitting that a criterion of, a criterion to be applied in judging what is or is not an indirect effect is the control of the development.
It may be a relevant factor, but it can't be a legal test. Because the simple point may be this, you may have a development which has direct impacts, which can't be controlled, and which therefore leads to the refusal of planning permission. Or ones which merely have to be accepted. But all I'm doing is drawing the Court's attention to it, because it makes it very clear you are looking and focusing very much on the development consent process and the effects of the development which is permitted, and not simply any effect which might result during the lifetime of what is extracted from the site. And what is important here in my respectable submission is that if one looks at cases like Squire and Abraham, you are dealing effectively with the operational effect, direct or indirect, of what is consented. Abraham, for example, you can't say that if you expand an airport's infrastructure so that you increase its capacity to enable it to operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week, including night flying, which was the complaint in that case, that that is not an effect of the consent which was actually granted.
If you're, if you take Abraham as an example, if you're doing the EIA for that particular airport, would you be looking only at noise made by planes as they take off and land? Or would you be looking, for instance, at a holding pattern above the airport?
Well, if it was part of the consequences of operating the airport, then yes. If, and indeed, there are cases of noise nuisance, where the noise of the aircraft in the holding pattern is part of the basis of the case. So, it comes to something I'm going to say later, which is that there are no, there are very few bright lines to be drawn in those cases, and the majority of them are questions of assessment on a Weddinsbury basis by the planning authority.
Without sort of compressing your whole argument on this theme into a sentence or two, let me just test this point with you at the outset, picking up what you've just said, actually. Much of the discussion so far has focused on seeking, as it were, not pejoratively now, a magic, if you like, a magic unlocking of the concept of indirect effects. Whereas I think the submission you've just made to us goes in a different direction. It is to the effect that indirect effects means indirect effects. And that's a matter ultimately for judgment.
Blewett, indeed.
That's a matter for judgment in the individual case. There may be factors that bear on that judgment, such as the possibility of doing a meaningful assessment. That's no doubt a discussion later in your submission. But that is the nature of the exercise. And the test, the test the Court applies is not, as it were, some bright line test...
Or recent foreseeability or anything else.
Or any tortious concept of that nature. It is about actually considering what the authority did. Is that right?
Yes. I would put it in this way, my Lord. There is firstly the possibility of saying, with regard to this type of development, or this specific development, you can rule out legally the relevance of what is alleged to be relevant. Short of, other than that, it is then into the territory of it's a matter for the assessment of a planning authority following well-established principles from Blewett onwards. Of course, Blewett's been approved at the highest level on several occasions.
And the judge said you can rule it out.
Judge said you can rule it out, but in any event, the authority were entitled. So the judge effectively structured it the same way and found for the respondent, on both grounds, in the alternative.
Yeah, but the judge's approach was different, wasn't it? In the two stages that he took that we noticed yesterday. I think, to be fair, you're contending for basically a simpler approach. But an approach that does not lay at the door of the Court, as it were, the task of identifying as a matter of law what an indirect effect can be.
My Lord, I was going to go on to say, one should not get unduly exercised because the Directive describes, the key phrase in the Directive is likely significant effect. That is the overriding principle. The fact that effects may be divided into direct, indirect, cumulative, secondary, it doesn't matter. What matters is whether they are an effect of the development which is being given permission. And I think it would be wrong for the Court to over-analyse what different types of effects may be. I can give an example of it. Certain things I stood up to intervene yesterday to say that we thought were indirect effects that had been assessed. The county council think they're direct effects. There's nothing to be gained in environmental assessment terms between worrying about the difference, because whether they're direct or indirect, they fall to be assessed if they are genuinely effects of the development. The question then is whether they are genuinely the effects of the development granting permission. And if they are, are they matters which should be Weddinsbury reasonably ruled out by the local authority?
Well, there are two different ways of putting that on there. One is to say, well, we just shut our eyes to that. It's nothing to do with us. The other is to say, well, let's think about greenhouse gases. No, we don't think it's a likely significant effect. There are two different processes.
Yes. That is true. They may not make a difference on the facts.
They may not.
But there are potentially two routes. And that's effectively the two stages that I've just been dealing with, my Lord.
Well, it matters ultimately only in this way, perhaps, or certainly in this way, that ultimately, the question is whether the authority has taken a Weddinsbury unreasonable view of the remoteness of an effect. I'm using the concept of remoteness...
And I'll come on to that.
...with care, I hope.
In a non-tortious sense.
In a non-tortious sense. Then it does matter. And in the present case, if the analysis you're urging on us is right, we will nevertheless need to look at what the authority actually did in this case.
Well, I'm going to begin by saying why the learned judge was right, saying, in principle, it wasn't an effect, and I, of the development, as consented. And it's not part of my submissions that one should treat every development and simply say, end use are always irrelevant. That it will depend on the project in question. Because in some projects, and I'm going to give you a household example in a moment, what might be seen as a process, I'm going to use process for a neutral term, from beginning to end effect, there may be several intervening stages, many of which are regulated separately or may require a separate planning permission. And you can say I'm heading to the oil refinery point in a moment. But can I take household waste? Very familiar example. If I apply for planning permission to build a housing estate, I will have to assess, for example, the discharge of water and sewage from the houses. I will have to show how that will impact on the local system. And as in a case which I argued before Mr Justice J., just before the summer, whether in fact there is a discharge of nutrients into protected waters, the Solent in that case, a case called Wyatt and Natural England, whether or not the discharges from the houses will have an impact on the site. That is all, whether you call them direct or indirect, they are likely significant effects of the development.
But what happens to your discharge once it enters the Solent is beyond the developer's control?
No, but it's, once it's in the Solent, it's added the nitrates into the Solent. Which is why I'm not saying that control is... The control comes at an earlier stage, and there are whole arguments about mitigation.
And then you've got examples like, you know, people's cats attacking birds.
Yeah. I've spent a lot of time dealing with recreational impacts in the Thames Basin Heathset Special Protection Area. I could bore for England on the subject.
You're not the only one.
Yeah, no, I know. We've all been very gainfully dealing with it.
Cat predation is familiar.
Yeah, and dog walkers, my Lord. Sorry, can I come back to my example? So you've got effects which clearly flow from the operation of the development. Just as you have noise from aircraft if you expand an airport, if you're discharging wastewater and sewage into the public sewers, which are then going to be discharged once treated into protected waters, that is an effect of the operation of the development. However, take household waste in the sense of what you put in your bin, in your refuse bin. The local authority is responsible, as waste authority, is responsible for collecting the waste, for separating it, treating it, and then disposing of it. Separate cense and environmental assessments are required for dealing with those factors, whether it's composting of discarded food and vegetation, whether it's energy from waste, burning the waste to produce energy, whether it's landfill. These are all matters which are part, you might say, well, ultimately, they're part of the process of living in a house because you throw your rubbish out and it's un-dealt with. But the way the planning system handles it is that those are regarded as separate projects and have separate environmental assessments, separate planning permissions, and separate environmental permits. So the fact that instinctively you may think that a process has an end effect in the case of, you know, my plastic bottles may go into landfill at the end of the day, doesn't necessarily mean that you have to assess the impact of landfill when you're getting permission for a housing estate. That is done at the stage of the waste authority or the contractors from the waste authority getting permission either for landfill or an energy from waste plant or a compost, whatever. But there are stages in what might be seen otherwise as an overall process of from someone's child drinking a bottle of fizzy drink and ending up in a landfill six months later.
But you started off with saying that it was an effect of the development is the issue.
Yes.
And one can see an argument that could go either way, that if the planning authority has taken an effect into account, which was argued was legally irrelevant, it would be challenged, and vice versa. So you've still got to decide whether it's a legally relevant effect and decide who is deciding whether it's a legally relevant effect.
My Lord, yes, but with respect, there's not necessarily a complete coincidence between whether some things are a material consideration in planning terms and whether it requires environmental assessment. The two may often go hand in hand, but not necessarily.
No, but if the planning authority decided that something was an effect that needed to be taken into account in an environmental assessment, that might be challenged, as in this case, on the basis that one side's arguing that it was and the other side's arguing that it wasn't. So it's the legal relevance?
Which is the first part of the two-part approach that I was discussing with my Lord the Senior President a moment ago.
Is it capable of being...
Is it capable?
A significant or likely significant effect, question one. If it is, what about this putative effect?
I hope the example I gave gives you an idea that if you're looking at something within the context of the process within which an environmental assessment is intended to be planted, that there may be ultimate effects, if I can call them that, which are not regarded as effects of the housing development. Just as I would submit in the case of crude oil extraction, what is sought is the extraction of crude oil. That oil, by common agreement, is incapable of end use without undergoing a further process. And that's clear, as the Court has already seen from Annex One of the Directive, Schedule One of the Regulations, crude oil refineries require environmental assessment. It is no different, in my respectable submission, from the Frack Free Rye Oil case where Mrs Justice Lang, I think Paragraphs 37 and 38, made it clear that you did not have to carry out an environmental impact assessment for the power station to which the materials being extracted were going, because it already had planning permission. The same here. If there is an ex-stand crude oil refinery, it will already have had to have been assessed and it will be required to obtain an environmental permit.
That assumes it's within the EU. And I thought that one of the agreed facts in the case is that nobody knows where this oil might end up.
Well, there is that. But with respect, the likelihood of it going outside the EU appears, no one's suggesting it's going to go outside the EU. And within the development...
Isn't that one of the, I thought, one of the agreed facts is that nobody knows?
Well, it's unclear, but...
Nobody knows, nobody knows. I expected you to say either way.
Well, equally, there is no evidence to suggest it will go outside the EU, and that seems to be counterintuitive, that it would be refined outside the EU, indeed.
Ultimately, I'm not saying that this is an example of it, but ultimately, on certain facts, such uncertainty might contribute to the conclusion that a meaningful assessment compliant with the EIA legislation is simply impossible.
And, well, you have the agreed statement of facts in Paragraphs eight and nine, which Mr Justice Holgate repeats almost verbatim in Paragraphs 65 to 68 of his judgement. What you have is the clear requirement that the crude oil has to be refined. It is the refinery which generates what others have called the end product. Now, whether that is fuel oil, whether it is diesel, whether it is, not diesel, fuel oil, whether it is for use for pharmaceutical purposes or manufacturing, it is more likely than not, as the agreed statement says, that it'll be used for combustion. But equally, that is something which can only occur once it's been through a further process. And you have the definition of the planning permission, of the development in the planning permission itself. Mr Justice Holgate, contrary to the criticisms made by Malonard-Freund, the Appellants clearly deals with that in Paragraphs 65 to 68, has it well in mind, see Paragraph Two as well, his judgement. And if you are producing or extracting from the ground something which cannot without further treatment and further project require, be used for the end use which is claimed, what Malonard-Freund's called, well, it's bound to be for profit. Well, of course it is. No one's going to extract oil using the infrastructure that's required for free. But commercial extraction of oil, which is in fact what the...
That's the description in the Directive.
But of course it's commercial. But that doesn't mean commercial, it's being extracted to go directly to the consumer for burning. It's got to go through another process. And if it's within the EU, and I take what my Lord Justice Morden says, it has to be subject to a further development consent and environmental permit. And environmental permits, unlike planning commissions, are kept under review by, in this jurisdiction, the Environment Agency. And they can be varied at the instance of the Environment Agency. And as I say, I...
So is the submission that you make that if you extract something from the ground which needs a further process before it is capable of use, it cannot be an indirect effect of the extraction?
In my submission, it is not a likely significant effect of the project which has been permitted. It is the effect of it's been taken, sold to a third party, which then turns it into a usable product. And it's the effect of the usable product which needs to assess. They will have a better idea, of course, as to what it's likely to be used for, because they'll know who they'll be selling it to. Can I take an example, perhaps Adam Serdon? I might have a steel plant which maybe... I might have a steel plant, which may be wishful thinking these days, but the manufacturer of steel doesn't require you to assess the manufacture of munitions that may be made from the steel or the manufacture of vehicles. Those will all require their own assessments at their own time, when the facilities for seeking those end manufacturers will be taken first. And similarly, the extraction of sand and gravel for the making of aggregates. There are some products which cannot be used without further processing and refinement. And in my respectful submission, you cannot fairly, as the judge declined to do, regard the end user right at the far end of the track as a likely significant effect of the proposals. You have to bear in mind that the system is set within the development consent process and includes quite clearly in the directive, a series of projects, all of which may relate to the same lengthy process from extraction to refinement to end use.
It will depend on the facts.
It will depend on the facts. Can I take an example? It doesn't necessarily apply to all fossil fuels either.
Well, I was thinking of coal, I was thinking of coal, actually.
Exactly. Coal may be refined, it may be gasified for power stations, it may be coked for steel manufacture, though that appears to be going out of fashion very rapidly. And I'm sure one understands very well why it is happening. But coal may be used directly. Crude oil cannot. So it's why I said at the beginning, it will depend very much, back to, back to the legal structure of, of, of the assessment process, will depend very much on the project which is seeking development consent. And, and with respect to what's been said already, that is what Mr. Justice Holgate, in my respectful submission, was plainly saying when he was talking about the effects of a development. He was focusing on the specifics which were agreed before him as they are before this of it. And it, it doesn't mean that all end-of-process uses are not significant effects of the development consent project. But it turns on the specifics of project seeking development consent. As I said, the Abraham was quite clearly a significant effect, enlarging an airport infrastructure. Of course it's an effect, the whole point of enlarging the airport infrastructure is to make the airport more usable and to enable it to be used twenty-four seven, which is precisely what the complaint was. In Squire, of course, the issue of indirect effect wasn't an issue. The issue there was that the local authority had wrongly considered environmental permitting to cover the matter, so an environmental assessment wasn't required. But equally, building chicken sheds for rearing chickens inevitably generates chicken manure and therefore the, the disposal of that manure on the farm, adjacent to a housing development, is an effect of the operation of the development consented itself.
Yes, and you say, well, direct or indirect doesn't actually matter.
No.
It is a likely significant effect of the development.
Yeah, and, and my lord, of, of course, as your lordship pointed out yesterday, it may not have required planning permission to spread the chicken litter on the farmland. Agricultural use, as your lordship knows, doesn't fall within the definition of development in section fifty-five, although the deposit of agricultural waste would in certain circumstances in section fifty-five if it increased the area of coverage or changed the land form or something of that description. But in any event, it was, it wasn't an issue there. The simple effect was, the simple question was, was it an effect of the operation of the, of the chicken sheds? And try as we might, we can't have chickens without generating chicken manure. Similarly, you don't expand an airport without looking at the effect of its expansion. And that, that brings us back, of course, to the Brussels Metropolitan Region Airport case. I'm not going to pronounce the Flemish.
Do you mean Liège?
No, I mean, I'm not going to try and, I'm, I'm giving you the translation. It's bundle ten of authorities, authorities bundle ten, AB one four five. It was effectively two, two Belgian authorities fighting with each other. The claimant is the Brussels Metropolitan Region, my Google translator tells me, and the other is Blaamskavess.
And you're not going to attempt the full name of the case?
Absolutely not.
Come on.
I can manage Belgian beer, that's about it. The important point there, and it's in the Advocate General, Advocate General Nagotsi's opinion at twenty-eight on page one five three, and the court adopting that at twenty-nine at page one six oh.
Sorry, wait a minute, AG twenty-eight, yeah.
And court twenty-nine. And they are at pages one five nine. Sorry, not one five nine. Wrong tab.
Court twenty-nine is at one sixty, that one, yeah.
Yes, it is. It's the same point, which is you cannot stretch beyond the language used by the legislation. So even in European law terms, purpose of interpretation will only take you so far. Purpose of interpretation cannot disregard the clearly expressed limitation, intention of the legislation of the European Union. And here, the clearly expressed intention is to integrate within the development consent process. That's back to my earlier point. It's been said in stirring the pot of submissions by the appellants, trying, trying to, I would respectfully say, overcomplicate and gloss the legislation. It's been said, well, project was, is, has been treated in a wide sense by the court. That it has, and the, the instances, all unsuccessful attempts, in my case, to defend the UK government in the European Court, have been in the context of a multi-consent process, where, for example, you have outline planning permission followed by reserve matters. The London Borough Bromley case in, what was it, in the House of Lords? The White City case, multiple consent procedures for what's now Westfield in, in Shepherd's Bush? And the Delena Wells case, where for old mining consents, they had to be revisited and new conditions imposed, subject to a requirement that you couldn't proceed with the permission until you had the new conditions imposed. All of those, that's Delena Wells, Commission in the UK, Bromley in the Secretary of State. I'm sure the court doesn't need to see those. If, they're referred to by my lord in Preston New Road at paragraph sixty-three of my lord, my lord's judgment. So if you want the, the reference, at least to the Bromley case, it's there, AB four oh six to seven. But that was because it was a for, almost a form of project splitting in the way our consent process operated, we were separating out the outline permission then from the reserve matters. And, and your lordship knows this from, from cases such as Fulford and, and the case I can't remember on the description of development.
The one about the wind turbine?
Yes.
I can't remember its name either.
No, I can't. But, 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 but in that case, that was simply because the European Court was saying, you haven't looked at your full development consent process, because your full development consent process has a series of stages, either in the minerals with the subsequent approval of conditions, or in the outline permissions, reserve matters. That's now all been dealt with through the, through the amendment to the regulation. So the, the, the issue about project in the UK was that we hadn't fully encompassed environmental assessment within our development consent procedure. That is now done, which is why, no doubt, it was in common ground before Milner, the judge, that there was no mistransposition of the directive. So arguments about, well, project's been given a wide meaning, don't actually help here because we know that the European Court's now satisfied, no further infractions proceedings were taken before Brexit with regard to those matters, that the European, the English regulations prior to Brexit did actually meet the requirements of the directive. So it doesn't go anywhere, in other words. So i- in my respectful submission, there are good reasons why Mr. Justice Holgate focused on the effects of the development, because as he said, sixty-five to sixty-eight, it was limited in what it was able to do. The treatment of the crude oil was not something that was sought by this consent, nor authorized by it. That would have to be done elsewhere and subject to whatever regulations the refinery was subject to. If within the EU, in the UK, further environmental assessment, if it was a new refinery, or environmental permitting, or pointing both. That is not to say the same result applies to all fossil fuel, but it does in this case for the reasons I've submitted. It's also right to point out that representations were received, significant representations about climate change policy, net zero and the like, which the local authority took into account. And one shouldn't forget that in terms of the definition of environmental information in regulation two-one of the twenty seventeen regulations and regulation four, environmental information includes not just the environmental statement, but the representations by the public who've been consulted. That is also referred to by Mr. Justice Holgate in his judgment.
Now, where, where do we see the representations of that?
Well, they're in the, I'm going to show you, lordship. It's why I put in the full.
The full officer's report, yeah.
So if, if the court will take the full report, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to use the internal page now for obvious reasons. Can I just take it through in order while, while we have it out? There are, there are other passages I want to show you. Page nine, which you do have in the supplementary bundle, it summarizes the planning issues. And you'll see that the first issue summarized is need for developments in climate change. The residence consultation starts on page fifteen, which is the only page you have of this in the bun, in the supplementary bundle. And if you turn through to page seventeen, you'll see a number of representations are cited. The Norwood Hill residents, climate change targets, the CPRE in paragraph seventy-one, carbon emissions, global warming targets, encouraging more fossil fuel burning is not the solution. And turnover, friends of the earth, another friend, Mr. Brands' clients, need to tackle change, climate change, reduce fossil fuels, reduce emissions by forty-five percent. The arguments were that it is now contrary to climate change considerations to grant permission at all. It's not, it's not the effect of a specific amount of carbon being emitted or other climate change gases such as methane. It's, you shouldn't be doing it at all. And it's then, you'll see at eighteen, the officers then summarize issues raised by the public, and a lot of the issues were concerned with the fact that a number of members of the public thought this was fracking and were concerned about seismic activity in the night. But be that as it may, climate change is dealt with at the top of page twenty in the summary. Concern that production of burning of fossil fuels would contribute to global warming, climate change does not accord. With climate change agreements such as the Paris Agreement and UN targets, UK has legal commitments to reduce carbon emissions, not green carbon neutral footprint, need for diesel increasing within vastness in electric cars, local authorities have to consider the impact on climate change. Though it's, it's not just you should be taking it into account, it's you shouldn't be granting this permission. And so when you come and, and we, I'm dipping in it out now of matters that are in the bundle, greenhouse gas emissions and the climate are dealt with beginning at page twenty-four under environmental impact assessment.
Yeah. Is it, is it right that the impact on climate change is discussed in greater detail in those paragraphs? There's a lot about the need for the development.
I'm going to come on this, this deal with later on.
Right.
It, it's in, it's, it's, the question is whether, for example, the net zero measures brought into the Climate Change Act a few months before this decision meant that there was a radical change and policy was now out of date and whether the policy saying we needed energy resilience was now out of date. That's what all this was focused on, saying we're, we're now in a position, given net zero, we shouldn't be allowing this sort of thing because our, and, and policy is now out of date. I mean, it's a difficult thing to argue that government policy shouldn't be followed, and I'll come to that in a moment, but it is dealt with in those terms later on. I said I'd show you other effects, and Milner and Friend and I may have a disagreement as to whether it's direct or indirect, but you'll see those, for example, on page twenty-five. Groundwater, traffic, lighting, so the impact of traffic, even though it's off-site, is obviously relevant and it's part of the operation for the site. You can't put up infrastructure and operate crude oil extraction and get it off-site without having traffic on roads, and that's been assessed.
Yeah.
You then have a section which is relevant conclusion on need, page thirty-three. And you see at one five nine and one sixty in particular, the point that's been made by officers, that notwithstanding climate change concerns, there is still a need effectively for energy resilience.
Right, where, where are you?
At one five nine and one sixty.
Okay.
Oil and gas remains an important part of the UK's energy mix. Continuing importance of fossil fuels, but aim to manage reliance on them, their potential environmental effects and the risks associated with security supply. But, but the point here is effectively the point that my lord, the senior president, made in the Pakem case, which is there is, with regard to carbon emissions and other climate change gases and the like, a top-down approach is being followed by the government. Even now, planning policy has not been amended in relation to minerals extraction, except with regard to coal after the Banks case. And how that matter is dealt with, as, as your lordship held in the Pakem case, is, is ultimately a matter for the government, which is what the, when one gets through all of the domestic legislation in Norway, the Supreme Court of Norway finds in the, in the Norwegian case, and we've set that out.
But just go back for a moment to paragraph ninety-seven.
Of course, my lord.
Second sentence, the question of the development, the development's impact on climate change
Yes.
in global atmospheric composition is discussed in greater detail.
Because there were.
All they say is, well, government policy says we must carry on.
Well, no, they, it's dealt with in two ways. The, the effects of the development are dealt with because there were, there was a climate change assessment of the fact that there will be carbon emissions and the like from the site and from the traffic. Those were assessed and dealt with. And you'll see that, although the section's cut off, if you go to the supplementary bundle, to the excerpt from the environmental statement, which is, starts at SB nineteen.
Nineteen, you say?
Nine, yeah, SB nineteen is the start. The relevant sections on greenhouse gas emissions starts at SB thirty-two, but it cuts off halfway through. But what they do, you'll see, the greenhouse gas releases that were assessed, you will see are set out at one, two, three. Yes. So the, so what the officer's report does, and I'll come to the policy bit in a minute, it deals with it in two respects. Firstly, what are the greenhouse gas emissions which are the effect of the operation of the development which is permitted? And then secondly, what is the effect of continuing to allow fossil fuels to be extracted in terms of the national, national policy on energy supply? Is it contrary to net zero, those issues? So it's dealt with firstly in the detailed sense of effects, and then secondly, in the broader sense of the direction of travel of national policy and legislation.
Forgive my ignorance, but does the document, part of which we've got, SB nineteen following, does that go before the committee?
Yes.
Is it, it's one of those documents?
It's part of the background documents that go to.
Is it?
Right. And it has to be, the, it has to be available in any event for public inspection.
Right.
These, these days, it's, it's put on websites and available for physical inspections as well.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, so. Sorry, you're, you're going to take us perhaps quite soon to.
Yes.
The place where it is explained why this was not assessed. Why, 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 why the effects of burning the, the refined product of the development would not, is not, not within the scope of the EIA directive?
That, that, that decision was made by the acceptance of the review report, and I'll come to that.
But you're going to show how that decision was made, because are you?
Well, officers accepted the review, it appears, and I've very little time to miss Tanzen. What I do say is it's approaching the normal approach to construing such matters and not treating it as if it was a legal document in itself. It is simply making the point that the future use of the oil is something that lies out the scope of the effects of this case. Perhaps not putting it in the terms one might draft as a lawyer, but it is making that simple point, and it's accepting what was said in the environmental statement, at paragraphs 120 to 122.
In terms of the officer's report, do we find that point made, or is this another background paper that goes before the committee?
Another background paper.
And is that listed in the background papers we've got on pages 85 and 86 of the officer's report? And how did the members get it? I know it's there on the website, all right, they can... Is there attention drawn to it?
My lord, I haven't got the complete... I say we printed out the complete document. What we printed out was what was in front of the High Court, which doesn't have all the background papers. We'll need to check that.
There'll be more following page 86, perhaps?
Yes. And there's an updated paper as well, as Miss Tanzen hopefully reminds me.
Which is SB 60?
Yes, the update is... Tam 6 of the supplementary bundle, SB 60, if you don't have Tam. Oh, sorry, no, that's the minute.
68.
Sorry.
That's the minute.
68.
68.
Yeah. Do you have a conclusion at the end of SB 69? I still want to come back to a few of the building blocks briefly in the report.
Yeah.
So I draw the court's attention to need, there's a... sorry, I should have also referred to the fact that the context of energy and supply and climate change is looked at in huge detail, paragraphs 119 to 158, pages 28 to 33. And you have the developing national context of the energy supply issues dealt with pages 28, leading to clear recognition at 133, the net zero order increasing the percentage by 2050 to 100%.
Sorry, the paragraph references you gave us just now, again, sorry.
Yeah, 119 to 158 deal with energy context and the need to supply.
Thank you.
And that leads to the conclusions at 159 to 160, et cetera. And that includes, as I say, clear recognition of the change in net zero. And you see at 134, for example, the local parish councils objected the application, grants the application, that should must be, does not mean climate change targets, and the policy test of the NGPS following the High Court ruling striking out, that was the decision of Mr Justice Dove, striking out the fracking paragraph. Therefore, the local planning authority should consider reasonable and recent scientific evidence in relation to climate change, CO2. Public representations have raised objections against the application, suggesting the proposal is incompatible with international and national objectives and climate change to reduce global tension. It's what I was saying earlier, the point being made is national policy has been overtaken by events, and you shouldn't therefore look at the energy reliance issues, you should reject it. Hence, the points that the officer then makes at 150 to 160, which is, well, national energy supply requirements are still the same, and that is not considered, as you'll see, that is not considered to be in conflict with the government's climate change agenda, the last part of paragraph 159. Now, that may change. This was September 2019. Notice Milena Friend very keen to rely on COP26, but that's two years after the event. We've still yet to see any national policy or legislative change to flow from it. And you see at 160, the need to maximise, and that is then picked up again in the conclusions, and that's modified, of course, by the conclusion on SB 69 at page 71, paragraphs 420, 421, which largely reflects those conclusions on need, taking account of the officer's view that the continued extraction of oil was still consistent with the government's climate change agenda, so thus rejecting the submissions that you should reject the proposals because it's contrary to net zero and contrary to all those other representations that were made.
There are two different points on that.
There are.
At least two different points. One is to say this, the extraction of crude oil is contrary to government policy or alternatively the government policy is wrong.
Yes.
And therefore you shouldn't permit it at all.
Yes.
Never mind investigation, it just shouldn't go ahead.
Yeah.
It's a different point to say, well, you might be able to permit it, but you'd better work out what it contributes to climate change...
But it wasn't that...
Before you just make the decision.
That wasn't the issue before then. The issue was, well, what are the impacts of the development? And does the change in the climate change considerations, the net zero measure, the amendment to the act, does that rule out granting permission at all?
Now, I follow that.
And that was...
So, I mean, are you then saying that Ms Finch is not entitled to raise the challenge which she has raised at all, because it wasn't a challenge, it wasn't part of the representation?
I'm not going to start arguing standing in the courtroom at all.
Right.
But the point is, the point is that the specifics of the assessment of effect was dealt with in the way in which you see in the review...
Yes.
...and in the ES, and it was done on the basis that effectively end-use effects are not part of the effect.
I understand.
You've got that.
I understand.
But also, the other point that's being made is, well, you should have been rejecting this outright for the reasons I've said. So there were two, at least two questions.
Right, well, that's no longer pursued, because I asked Mr Willis yesterday...
Yes.
...quite specifically, that, you know, the planning permission could still be granted...
Yes.
...even if he's right on the points that he's argued.
Yes, yes.
So that, there's no longer...
But my submission is that the local authority was entitled to rule it out for the reasons I've submitted, and they're somewhat less elaborate than the erection which the appellant seek to add to significant effect. And in my respectful submission, why those submissions should lead to rejection is because they're rooted firmly in the normal approach to environmental impact assessment that I've already dealt with, the two-part stage that I discussed with my lord earlier. And secondly, the fact that it's rooted in the structure of the directive and the regulation, and that you're entitled to say, don't have to consider this because it's only one operation, that is, the extraction of crude oil, the effects of transforming it into a usable fuel or chemical, whatever it's to be used for, is a separate process. It has to go through a separate process, it has to be dealt with differently, you simply can't use it that way when it comes out of the ground.
I understand.
That may not be the same with other fossil fuels. And my lord, in my respectful submission, that is what Mr Justice Holgate meant by of the development, and which is why, in my respectful submission, he was right. My lord, it's also worth just bearing in mind in that context, and it perhaps should have dealt with this when I was dealing with Abraham. When one looks at Annex 4 and Schedule 4, one of the points, just to bear in mind, AB 30, if the court were... Forgive me for going back to the directive.
Right. Are we clearing the decks a little at this point?
Yes.
We're going... You're going to take us to the review or not?
Yes, my lord.
You are. But we're now looking at...
I just something I've got to deal with.
Right. AB 30.
AB 30, Annex 4, this is the equivalent to Schedule 4, just to draw the court's attention to the fact that C, description of the main character is the operational phase of the project. That just underlines the point I was making about if you expand an airport, its operational characteristics are going to change. If you build chicken huts, you're going to generate waste, et cetera. If all you're doing is extracting crude oil and not refining it, then the position in my respectful submission is different. There is no reference, as I've already submitted, to purpose. What you are looking at are, what you're required to consider is what is set out in Annex 4 and Schedule 4. A description, its physical characteristics, its operational phase, estimate of residues and emissions, reasonable alternatives, et cetera. It's set, the directive and the regulation set out with a fair degree of prescription what is required, and purpose is not one of them. The fact that you may have an ultimate, or the fact that there may be an ultimate purpose in the use of the crude oil for certain features isn't part of the directive, it's what is the development you're seeking permission for. I'll come then, if that's convenient, at the end of my hour, to the review. Firstly, the environmental statement at SB 34.
SB 34.
SB 34, which is the assessment methodology in the ES that was criticised. 121 and 122. My respectful submission, it's unfair to criticise the learned judge the way he characterises this, it's clearly not as well expressed as it might be, and I've said these are not documents drafted by lawyers. But clearly what it is getting at is the fact that what this is is an extraction operation, and what else goes on, whether it's off-site or otherwise, is not part of this development project, and that's separately regulated in any event. In my submission, the approach the learned judge took to that can't fairly be criticised. And that is picked up at the review at SB 40 at 515. And again, the language may not be perfect, not drafted by a lawyer again, but it is saying no more than these emissions from the ultimate end-use are not emissions of the project, the development.
Yes.
And my lord, if one reads these with a fair degree of common sense and flexibility, Milena Friends are wrong, therefore, to criticise the way Mr Justice Holgate characterised it, and that's my submission about it.
And the relevant passage in his judgment?
I have a horrible feeling, Lordship, it's going to say this, it's the one thing I didn't...
Perhaps I'm just being lazy.
No, I will find it for you. I'm hoping someone's going to tug my can, but it doesn't seem to happen. 127, I'm told. Yes, CB 176 and 177. Yes, it goes, starts at 127 and continues on to the next pages, 129, 130, 132 to 133,
Now, I was looking, his treatment of the review in particular, it's at 131, I think.
Yes, it's 127 through to 133, yes. And the point he's making in 133 is the point I was making earlier, which is when you're dealing with crude oil, it's not the same, for example, as dealing with coal or something which can be, which is effective the operation of the development...
Sorry, you said 133 then, did you mean 13?
131, I'm sorry.
131, yeah. That's the point, you say, that's a fair analysis.
Yes, for the reasons I've set out at some length.
Well, sorry, a correct analysis.
Yes. Lords, unless I can assist the court any further, those are my submissions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, my lord.
Yes, Mr Morse.
May please your lordships, in order to avoid duplication, I just have two very short submissions to make. The first is in relation to the proper approach, the approach you take in this case, and the second is to go to the CJEU authorities.
Yeah, sorry, just to repeat the first one, the proper approach to...
Proper approach to defining...
Defining the project.
In direct effects.
Right.
So my submission is the court isn't required to define indirect effect or to establish generally applicable tests to identify indirect effects. In my submission, that's not necessarily all thoughtful, and the reason for that, in my submission, emerges from what was said in Frackland, where my Lord Justice Limbrom drew together what the authorities established in relation to indirect effects, it's authorities' bundle, page 408, paragraph 67.
67.
67.
Yeah.
Identified a principle well established in Europe, the message of authority, because the existence and nature of indirect effects will always depend on particular facts and circumstances of the project under consideration. In my submission, because the nature and the existence of indirect effect turn so heavily on the facts, it is futile exercise to establish a generally applicable test or a definition beyond the bounds of the sphere of indirect effect.
Yeah.
And so that's why, in my special argument, it's paragraph 26, CB 2, page 116.
Mr Morse, for me at least, you're going to have to speak up a little, I'm sorry.
I'm not sorry, my lord.
You're competing with an aeroplane, I'm sorry.
CB 116, paragraph what?
Paragraph 26, my lord.
26.
So in 26, my lord, the section states it resists the imposition of a test. In my submission, the words of the project, of the development merely signify a need for a decision-maker upon the facts of each case, to consider the degree of connection between the development and the project and the particular indirect effect, and if that relationship is judged sufficiently close, then the effect of the project, and that is all what one needs to say by way of guidance or test in this case.
And that, you would say, is an evaluative judgement for the decision-maker.
Precisely, but unchallengeable only on whether it's three grounds per the...
Yeah.
So that was the first submission in relation to approach. The second is just to go to both the Commission and Spain and Abraham's. I would expect you to adopt what's been said about those authorities by Mrs Houghton and Mr Eldon, but I just want to show the court the particular question that was referred to the court of justice in those cases, to help refer the comments that the court of justice are saying. And in terms of, to cut to the chase, both of those cases involved member states taking a very narrow literal interpretation of the particular Annex 1 project that was in issue. And in my submission, all the court of justice were saying was that the particular Annex 1 project in issue needs to be read as not merely confined to the physical works, but also the operation of those works. And just to give my lord's the references, Commission and Spain is at AB 86.
You want us to look at these?
If my lord would, please. AB 86.
This was really another salami slicing case, wasn't it?
It was, my lord, yes. We can see in the headnote on AB 86... We can see in the headnote on AB eighty-six, at page three, one of the arguments of the Spanish government was that the EIA directive does not apply because the project, which in that case was to lay a second track of railway, didn't fall strictly within point seven of Annex One, which was the construction lines for long-distance railway traffic. Essentially, the Spanish argument was, there's already a railway line there, we're merely duplicating the track, therefore it doesn't take full construction of a railway. The advocate general herself of that at paragraphs thirty-eight and forty on page ninety-three. Page thirty-eight, paragraph thirty-eight. The commission's submission is to be recorded with a literal interpretation and being consistent with the purpose of the directive. The advocate general agreed with that at paragraph forty. And then we see the court rejecting the Spanish argument of paragraph forty-four on AB one-oh-two. And the reason for that at forty-eight and forty-nine, I believe, duplicating the track and having a project of that kind as a significant effect on the environment, and the objective of the directive would be undermined.
Sorry, where are you in the court's judgement?
It's paragraphs forty-eight and forty-nine at the top of AB one-oh-three.
Thank you.
So the Commission and Spain was not a case about indirect effects, it was about the definition of Annex One projects, and the court rejecting the literal interpretation of construction of a railway.
Right.
Then if my lord would please turn to Abraham, which is at AB one-oh-six, that's essentially the same form of argument as being advanced in Abraham. The question, one of the questions referred by the Belgian court, we see as AB one-hundred-and-twenty-eight, paragraph twenty-one. It's the third question that's relevant. Since a projected increase in the activity of an airport is not directly referred to in the annexes of the directive, must a member state in question nevertheless take into account that increase might have an potential indirect effect and modifications made to the infrastructure? So again, it's the argument, Annex One doesn't refer directly to the use. And the court rejected that.
Sorry, I couldn't see where you were reading from exactly.
Sorry, my lord.
Twenty-one, sub-paragraph three.
Sorry, missed you.
Yeah, on AB forty...
Section three.
Thank you very much.
And the court answers that at paragraphs forty-one and following.
It does, my lord, and then it's also helpful to see paragraph thirty on AB one-hundred-and-thirty, which actually sets out the wording of the relevant Annex One project.
Yes.
So again, it was referred to in terms of, taking literally referring to construction of the infrastructure, but as we've seen, the court concludes the operation. So that's what these cases decide, that the Annex One projects, referring merely to construction, include operation, because as my learned friend Mr Elvin has submitted, the directive expressly in Annex Four requires consideration of both construction phase and the operation phase. So in my submission, when one is dealing with a project then that falls within Article One, two-A, limb two, that's interventions in the natural environment involving mineral extraction, one isn't engaged in search for any product when one is applying Abraham's principle, the equivalent argument to that which was run in Commission, Spain and Abraham. To say, well, the definition of project refers to extraction of the mineral, and that is all that is the focus of the environmental statement. The answer applying Abraham's principle is no. It is all of the activities comprised in the intervention that form part of the project. So it's not a narrow literal interpretation focusing only on the extraction. It would include the storage, it would include the transport off-site. So that is the proper application of the Abraham's principle in my submission to the case falling within Article One, two-A, limb two. So, and then a second position would further that.
Well, I've got one question, if I may. Mr Elvin has stressed the fact that you can't use the oil without the further process at a refinery, and seemed to suggest there might be a difference with a mineral which you could use without further processing, such as coal. What's your position on that?
Well, I certainly agree with that, and in my submission, that's why the judgment's very careful at paragraph one-hundred-and-twenty-six of his judgement, CB one, page seventy-six, to express his judgement in relation to the circumstances of this case.
Yeah, so I mean, if it were a coal mine, would the EIA cover greenhouse gas emissions from the extracted from the mined coal?
It would depend on the facts and circumstances of the case, but I certainly wouldn't submit that a priori that is ruled out as a matter of law. The appendix is an example where it was voluntarily submitted.
Yes, well, it was voluntarily submitted, though.
Voluntarily submitted, but the section statement considered it on the basis it was relevant material. I hope that answered my lord's question.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mr De Jong, who's going to reply? Both of you?
My lord, I'm going to allow my learned junior to respond. I may be the, well, I certainly won't be the organ grinder, I may... I was thinking I'm probably more likely to be the monkey and handing up any documents that my learned friend...
Well, I'm grateful, auspicious start. If it assists, I'm going to reply via subject matter rather than via chronological approach. And if I may begin by addressing the definition of the project versus the development. And your lordships will recall, yesterday, there was a long discussion with Mrs Townsend about what the project is, and she submitted that the project is the works, not the purpose, and an element of that also formed part of Mr Elvin's submissions this morning. And first in response, at the very least, what is the project is the development for which planning permission is applied. I'm going to say more about that shortly, but at the very least, the first element of what the project is, is the development for which planning permission is applied. And so it's important to be clear about what is included within the ambit of the planning permission and how it was granted in this case. So in particular, the grant of permission in this case was not simply for the physical kit needed to extract the oil. The planning permission is needed in order to permit the act of extracting the oil. And the permission was granted for the act of extraction. If I can ask the court, please to turn in the core bundle to...
I don't think that's in dispute, I think...
Well, indeed.
Mrs Townsend accepted that the project included the extraction of the oil, and I think so did Mr Elvin.
Yes. And so the ramifications of that, the decision notices, page three-six-eight of the core bundle. The defendant's detailed grounds of defence also make it clear that the application was for commercial production, that's page two-four-four of the bundle. And the description of the development at the head of the environmental statement, that's page nineteen, correctly reflects that the permission was for enabling the production of hydrocarbons from the wells.
Yeah, well, that's also part of the description in the directive.
Precisely so.
It's the extraction of petroleum for commercial purposes.
Yes, and indeed...
That is the project.
It is somewhat ironic that the reason there's an impact assessment, there was an obligation to undertake an impact assessment in this case, was because of the level of extraction that might have occurred of the oil. But the effect that is defined out of the environmental statement is the greenhouse gas emissions from combustion of the oil, defined out as an indirect effect that is not to be assessed. So in this case, the upshot of all of that is that the oil is not simply the end product of a different sort of development. So the oil is not like the plains in Abraham. It is more like the runway. Because the development for which permission was granted included and had to include the extraction of the oil. Mineral extraction is a use of land, to address an aspect of what my learned friend Mrs Townsend was saying. The runway development or constructing poultry sheds is a use of land. Mineral extraction is a use of land for which planning permission was sought and was required. And if there's no permission for removal of the oil for production, as was pointed out yesterday, it stays in the ground and emits no greenhouse gas emissions. So given that commercial production of the oil is part of the project for which planning permission was required, in our submission, that makes the clear link, in fact clearer than in Squire and Abraham, between the extraction of the oil and assessing the inevitable impact that flows from that, i.e. greenhouse gas emissions when the oil is combusted. And I'll address separately the intervening process, I won't, it's short. And that in my submission is in fact reflected in what Mr Elvin referred to this morning in Annex One, paragraph fourteen, and indeed in the overall purpose of EIA in this case. And in fact, when my learned friend Mr Elvin took the court through the officer's report, it's absolutely striking, as your lordship pointed out, that the discussion of the climate change impacts of this development took place in relation to the need analysis, of the need for the oil. And why is that? We're not talking about the need for oil just as it comes out of the ground and the analysis stops there. Why is there a need for oil that was accepted by this authority as part of the justification for granting permission? It's because the oil is to be extracted in order to be burned, to be used. And it's also striking, well, in the conclusion to the need section, that's very clear. So it is, there's a very significant disconnect in my submission, in the responses from the respondents. Because on the one side, it's accepted that the analysis of the need element in the report was completely appropriate in focusing, in fact, on the impact of the oil as burned. And indeed, it's accepted as a matter of course, in assessing the benefits of such developments, which one must remember, paragraph two-and-nine of the NPPF requires great weight in policy terms to be provided for those benefits. Those benefits don't arise simply from the oil coming out of the ground and stopping there. Those benefits arise and are obliged to be given great weight because of the use of the oil. So it's the appellant's case which squares that circle, which says, if the benefits of the use of the oil, which would feed into a socio-economic impact analysis of the development, if the need for the oil, which would feed into a socio-economic impact analysis of the development, are all perfectly proper to be taken into account under EIA, so too the impacts from the combustion of the oil. They are indirect effects in the same way, and it was wrong as a matter of principle for the judge in this case not simply to say, well, one may not, depending on the circumstances, assess or not assess on a case-by-case basis the downstream emissions of this sort of fossil pure development. The judge came to the conclusion that legally, that that is not an indirect effect.
Your point is you've got to balance the scales here, between benefit and disbenefit. And if you put into the benefit side of the scales, the benefits which arise from the use of the oil, you must put into the disbenefit side of the scales, greenhouse gases which will be emitted by the use of that oil.
Yes, but it goes further than that.
And I suppose you would also, you might also say, that in considering that balance, whether there is a net increase in worldwide consumption of oil as a result of this particular drilling operation, is going to be equally balanced both for benefit and disbenefit. And if you can't assess it, you've got the same problem for both.
Precisely so. And a bit further than that, my lord, this submission also is to the effect that if as a matter of principle, one is not lawfully able to assess the disbenefit, then one wonders whether one is lawfully able to assess the benefit as well.
Yeah, well, that's the same equilibrium point.
Yes, but yes. My learned friend Mr Elvin, in his submissions, was, made a point to the effect, relying on the directive and Article Two, that the purpose of the analysis in environmental impact assessment terms is for the results, for the impacts, to be integrated into the development consent process. And he rode back from the suggestion that that meant that there should be some kind of control test. But the point, also in response to that, is twofold. First, the purpose of EIA, both as put in clear terms in the directive in Article Two, and as reiterated in the PPG guidance to which the court was taken yesterday, the purpose makes it clear that EIA is designed to bring information to the decision-maker's attention. And then the decision-maker can make the decision, which may be to refuse planning permission explicitly because the extent of the impacts are not such that the development consent and any other regime working together can control them. And this was a point that was made by both the appellant and Friends of the Earth, that if the decision-maker is told about all the effects, the decision-maker can make a decision whether to grant planning permission, because likely significant effects won't arise, or there's planning reasons why the balance falls in the other direction, or to refuse. So the fact that the point is to align with development consent, in fact, takes the respondents nowhere, because it doesn't provide a test, and it illustrates, in fact, why it's incredibly important in EIA terms, for exactly those sorts of effects that might not be capable of control through the consenting process to form part of the EIA...
Well, I think Mr Elvin's real point on that was that you need separate consents for the refining process.
Yes.
And then presumably for dispensing it in petrol filling stations to put in people's cars.
Yes, so let me address the void in the middle point, or the separate consent point about the intermediate process. So Mrs Townsend's point was that there's the void in the middle, which is the refinery, and the refinery breaks the chain. And Mr Elvin's point was slightly different, as your lordship has just formulated it, that there is an intermediate process which might regulate the effect. And if I can take the two separately. First, in this instance, there's no difficulty with the refinery breaking the causal chain, because there's no uncertainty about what would happen there, and importantly, the environmental impact before and after... And importantly, the environmental impact before and after refining in greenhouse gas emission terms is exactly the same. Refining just moves the oil along the inevitable process towards it being burnt and the emissions being released. So in the case of this sort of fossil fuel, the intervening refinery process doesn't break the causal chain. Then looking at the householder examples and the potential for there to be other consents relevant to the process. In my submission, the oil in this case is much more akin to the household waste filled with nitrates that goes through other processes, for example, the wastewater treatment process, and is then put out into the solvent, rather than being akin to my plastic bottle which might end up in landfill. And that's for two reasons. First, the greenhouse gas emissions would not be assessed or controlled necessarily as part of the other consents around the refinement process. And in fact, Mr Elvin made this point when he said that assessment could occur if planning permission for a new refinery in the EU was sought. But as is always the case under EIA, one isn't going to take a narrow approach to how one assesses the potential likely significant effects. In light of the precautionary principle, taking a worst-case scenario, one wouldn't be assuming that the oil will be refined by a new refinery that is going to be subject to its own consenting procedure where there might be some aspect of assessment of the emissions. There is no evidence before this court, nor was there before the High Court, nor was it any part of Mr Justice Holgate's judgment that the reason that these indirect effects should not be assessed is because they would be controlled by another permitting regime.
Yeah.
Mr Elvin's approach this morning in relation to minerals and the fact that there are intervening processes, crushing of minerals or refining of minerals or blending or sorting of the minerals which take the raw mineral into a state in which the mineral is used or usable. If that is a justification for the approach taken to scope three emissions in this case, then in my submission, there's a very significant danger that the negative impacts of mineral development will a priori be removed from the EIA process. Well, as I said earlier, the benefits of the use of the mineral after it's crushed, refined, sorted, blended, et cetera, maintain their presence in both the assessment and the planning balance. If I can move on to the difficulty or the impossibility of assessing as opposed to quantifying the emissions. Mrs Townsend made a number of submissions yesterday that the greenhouse gas emissions of combustion are capable of being quantified, i.e. the extent can be understood, but not their impact assessed because of all the.
Can you just help me on how this relates to the appeal? I don't understand the local planning authority to have said, well, we're thinking about greenhouse gas emissions, but we really have no idea how to measure the impact on climate change and therefore we can't say they're likely significant or that kind of reasoning. They said, I read their decision, we accept the developer's argument, but because refining happens off-site and is out of the developer's control, we needn't think about it.
Yes.
What is the evidence about whether you can or you can't assess? I know it's been submitted, but what's the evidential basis for either sides of it?
Yes, well, I'll address that point in a second, but your lordship anticipated my first response to that point, which is, it was never set at the time, it was never put forward as a basis for not undertaking the assessment in this case. And if it's being put forward as some basis for a wider principle, then in my submission, it doesn't work in that way either. But there was evidence, significant evidence, about the way in which greenhouse gas emissions can be assessed and in our submission should have been assessed before the High Court. So there was, for example, and we have copies if your lordship wishes to see them, in the bundle provided by the claimant attached to a witness statement, the AIMA guidance, which is titled Assessing Greenhouse Gas Emissions and Evaluating Their Significance. And part of a witness statement put in by the claimant under the heading Are the Carbon Emissions From Horse Hill Oil Significant? Addressed the fact that there is a methodology which is understood looking at the extent of the greenhouse gas emissions and then evaluating them in relation to national, regional and local carbon budgets in line with the temperature obligations. There's a perfectly sensible methodology.
The judge presumably didn't need to go into all that because he ruled it out at stage one?
Correct. But there is, it's absolutely clear that there are methodologies which are related to the global warming potential of the emissions and which will allow for full and proper analysis of the impact under EIA terms. And then the decision-maker can make a decision in planning terms. And indeed, that's what happened in banks. And Mrs Townsend suggested that there was assessment of the quantification of the emissions in banks, but nothing further. And in my submission, if the court just looks at paragraph 78 of the judgment, that's on AB 467.
AB 467.
467. Where there's an.
Just for clarity, my point about difficulty would be related to this case and what we know about the circumstances in which emissions would be caused downstream. It wasn't in relation to what was done in banks, which of course is a cold case.
Right, so what are we looking at in this judgment?
So it's paragraph 78, which sets out an extract from the Secretary of State's decision. Because by the time the Secretary of State was considering the application, there most assuredly was an assessment of impact. Because the extent of that impact is being addressed in the Secretary of State's decision. And in fact, my learned friend, Mr Moles clarified that that indeed was what had happened. So to respond to my learned friend's submissions and her intervention just made, I go back to the AIMA guidance and the methodologies well-understood for assessing the impact of this development. It matters not in my submission that one is unclear about the exact timing of the greenhouse gas emissions being emitted, that one doesn't know where the cars will be or who the drivers will be, et cetera, et cetera. The environmental impact assessment process for this development could perfectly properly, taking the precautionary principle and looking at a worst-case scenario, have assessed the impacts of the extent of the oil that would be burnt, making a number of assumptions guided by the methodology. And that is, in my submission, exactly how environmental impact assessment works in every other area where there are uncertainties. And one must recall the centrality, and we've put this in our skeleton, of the precautionary principle, I think Friends of the Earth deals with this as well, to guiding environmental impact assessing in general. And it's there in, I think it's Article 2.1 of the directive. That where there is uncertainty, that doesn't mean you don't assess or you can't assess. And in fact, where there is uncertainty, it can be particularly important to assess, making reasonable assumptions based on the science and based on the method.
Not this case, Mrs Deon, but do you accept in principle that there can be circumstances in which the impossibility or extreme difficulty of conducting a meaningful assessment will itself be a relevant factor in the evaluative judgment of the local planning authority deciding whether a matter should or should not be included in EIA? I stress, not this case necessarily.
Of course, and that's Khan. And that is in fact 18.4 of the regulations on AB 48, which makes it absolutely clear that what the environmental statement must include is information taking into account current knowledge and methods of assessment.
Yes, and if those methodologies are, for whatever reason, insufficient or irrelevant, that will be a relevant factor.
Yes, absolutely so.
That's a matter of common sense perhaps even.
Correct.
Well, I suppose you'd say you can't reach a reasoned conclusion if the materials available don't allow you to do that.
Do so precisely.
It may be worse, you may be actively misleading yourself.
Yes, exactly so. Yes, but none of this assists the respondents. Because that analysis that your lordship has just undertaken would be an analysis within the EIA process and would be expressed either in scoping or in the assessment itself in exactly the way your lordship has put it, i.e., we looked at this, it's impossible to assess it because there's no methodologies that help current state of knowledge, et cetera, et cetera. So we're not assessing the indirect effect. That's not what happened here, number one. And number two, that's not what Mr Justice Holgate's judgment entails.
Well, I don't think Mr Justice Holgate addresses this particular question, you see.
No, because a priori, the scope three emissions are not capable of assessment as an indirect effect in Mr Justice Holgate's view. And so one doesn't even get to asking the question, is there a methodology which is capable of assessment?
Well, whether he's right or wrong, there is a logic in that sequence of thinking, isn't there? Whether he's right or wrong, it would be logical to start with the principle and to work from the principle to the particularity.
Yes. I think, if I understand what your lordship is saying. Yes, one understands the general principle of what falls within and out with the EIA process and then applies the directive and the.
If for whatever reasons, again, I'm stressing not this case necessarily, if for whatever reasons a matter is, is not properly within the frame of the legislation as drafted, then that is an end of the matter. And to consider the particular circumstances of conducting an assessment of that which isn't in the scope of the legislation is an especially futile exercise.
Just to pick up one further point on the nature of the assessment. Mrs Townsend, when she was discussing the fracturing case and extended flow testing, entered into an exchange about the indistinguishability of the oil and the joining of the crude, the international market of crude oil. And she said that there was no evidence that removing the oil from the ground rather than leaving it there would increase the overall quantity of greenhouse gas emissions. And then eventually she, she accepted that the plain truth is that we don't know either way. And firstly, just want to make it absolutely plain to the court that there was evidence before the High Court, not in the Court of Appeal bundles because it didn't, in our submission, need to be, but there was very clear evidence before the High Court to the effect that the indistinguishable argument was wrong, that substitution could not be relied on, and that taking the oil out of the ground would lead to more, an increase in the overall quantity of greenhouse gas emissions. And just in very, very shortly, very shortly to say.
Can I just say, Mr Justice Holgate excluded this material. There was an argument because it was an ex post facto material.
And.
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 No, you don't.
And it was not taken into account by the objective of this.
Yes, well, I'm not entirely surprised because it wasn't taken into account in making the decision.
Yeah, my lord, I'm sorry, it, it, yes, it wasn't excluded, it was all allowed in, it was all in the bundle.
But whether it was or it wasn't, it wasn't a point that the planning authority took.
Exactly.
In reaching the decision that they reached.
Exactly. And so it is important to put aside any suggestion that a justification for not assessing in this case is that there won't be an overall increase. Moving then on to the test for indirect effects, about which there was quite a bit of discussion both yesterday and today. And Mrs Townsend criticised, and indeed Mr Elvin criticised the appellant for glossing the EIA regulations through proffering a test for indirect effects. But it's important to understand the genesis of this. Note that Mr Justice Holgate, in his paragraph 111 of the judgment, criticised the appellant for not proffering a test. And indeed, during the hearing, he asked and he engaged with and he looked into the extent or question of what a test would be and how it should be formulated. Hence, the attempt to formulate a test to assist the court here. And although tests are offered, and this is the important point, it is not necessary for this court to agree with them or apply them in order to allow the appeal. And in fact, everybody now seems to agree, including the Secretary of State, given the submissions just made, that to deal with the appeal, it's not necessary to define in some sort of definitive way indirect effects or to apply a test. That there is a way through for this court to make a decision without having to do that. For the appellant, the submission is as follows. On the facts of this case, the consequences are not merely likely or foreseeable, they are inevitable.
Yeah.
And it would be possible to give judgment on that basis rather than, and to resist indeed the evolution of a wider test, as did Lord Justice Morbick in Bateman in relation to the test for significance. And the reference there is paragraph 19 of Bateman, AB page 263. But the difficulty faced by the respondents in agreeing that there is no need for a test for likely, for indirect effects is that in the context of this sort of fossil fuel developments, the High Court imposes essentially a test.
High Court imposes?
A text about why they must be excluded. And that is what is addressed in grounds 1, 2 and 3.
Well, that's the judge at paragraph 126.
That's the judge at paragraph 110, through to 126.
Yeah. So, I mean, the judge doesn't, doesn't lay down a test. In fact, he says, whatever the test is, this activity is not within it.
Well, in my respectful submission, he goes further than that. And that's why he criticised us as the appellant for not proffering a test. He is, through paragraphs, in fact, it's a bit earlier, 101 through to 110, and then at 122 to 126.
Could you, if at some point you could identify the test that he sets out?
Yes, he is proffering a test. The true legal test at paragraph 101 on page 71 is whether an effect of the, on the environment is an effect of the development for which planning permission is sought. And the fact that it's an inevitable consequence is not relevant to that. So step one in the test is, is an effect on the environment which is an effect of the development for which planning permission is sought? which planning permission is sought.
Well, to be, sorry to interrupt you, but just to be absolutely clear, this is very distracting, but never mind, the test is in the penultimate sentence of one oh one, is that right?
So it begins there, yes, it's in the penultimate sentence of one oh one, and as was investigated, my honour friend, Mrs Townsend, yesterday, that means that there's work being done by the word of, effect of the development.
And what the judge says in that sentence is the question, not the test for answering the question.
Yes, that's one difficulty with, that's one difficulty with the judgment, that we say, even if it's formulated as a question, it's not the correct approach.
Well, maybe the judge didn't and deliberately didn't set what can be described as a redefinition of what the legislation says, maybe he simply relied on what the legislation says for what it says.
My lord, I don't think that's the importance of the judgment, and if I could just explain why. So paragraph one oh one sets the true legal test, as Mr Justice Holgate put it, then paragraph one, ten reiterates that in the context of indirect effects. And he says that those cover consequences which are less immediate, but they must nevertheless be effects which the development itself has on the environment. And then at one, two, six, the upshot of all of that is that the test, as has been developed, results in impacts caused by consumers in locations unknown and unrelated to the development, not being indirect effects. And that's why there are three crowns of, or three aspects to our ground of appeal, because we say those are the three elements of what this judgment ultimately imposes as a test for understanding what is an indirect effect of fossil fuel development, in the very least, but what is capable of being an indirect effect more generally. And that's why, at the very outset of my submissions yesterday, I was focusing on what is the operative effect of the use of that phrase, an effect of the development for which planning permission is sought, because in my submission, this goes to the narrowing down of an indirect effect because of the way in which the consenting process works and what is and isn't part of the consent. So anything that falls outside of that, like consumers using the oil in unknown locations, or indeed, we would say, spreading manure on unknown fields, doesn't appear to pass the test. And that's why we also say that it doesn't appear clear how Mr Justice Holgate comes to this decision in relation to the former, when there's clearly a different decision properly made in relation to the latter. So in my submission, when the Secretary of State, who went in with Mr Elbin, respond on the basis that one doesn't need to have a test, then that is a reason for the appeal to succeed. Because whatever happens, if this decision, the decision of this court is there shouldn't be or doesn't need to be a test, one doesn't need to gloss the words, one simply looks at them, understands them in the context of each case, and the filtration process for it not being too expansive is likely and significant, then that would mean, essentially, the appellant would succeed, at least in part on grounds A one and A three.
Yeah, though the other side would say that if the true legal test is simply inherent in the words of the legislation, that wouldn't be correct, that submission.
Yes, and that's where we came to the discussion about what is meant by, of the development for which planning permission is sought.
Is there more to be said about that?
Given the way in which the question was just raised, I think there is a bit more to be said about that, I wasn't, so, let me say it. I said at the very outset that the project is at the very least the development for which consent is sought, at the very least it's that, but it is not necessarily only that, because the project can encompass processes for which no planning permission is required, and may encompass processes that will take place outside the red line boundary of the development. And that is not to go so far as to say that the only case where this works is project splitting. Project splitting is one type of instance where this occurs, but it's perfectly foreseeable to have an application for planning permission for a particular process, say, the building of sheds for housing of chickens, which encompasses a process which would take place outside of the red line boundary for which no consent is required, i.e. the spreading of manure.
There's not much use enlarging your runway if planes can't fly from somewhere else.
Precisely so, and that is in fact why, despite all the disagreement about scope three emissions, they have been assessed in all the recent airport expansion cases because of exactly that recognition. But as, the point I was trying to make when I started yesterday, which drew some criticism, wasn't going as far as that criticism suggested, and in fact is a point that's made in our skeleton argument and the requisite authorities are provided, in paragraph forty-eight of the skeleton, on page sixteen. Paragraph forty-eight of page sixteen, in response to paragraph one hundred and ten of the judge's decision, so one of those three paragraphs that I say makes up the test, we make the point that what the project is, is not ring fenced by what development is applied for in terms of planning permission, and we give the references to ecologistas and prenega as well, the ecologistas paragraph is on page one forty of the bundle, and prenega, page one, six, eight. Oh, sorry, and the skeleton page is CB two slash twenty-seven. So coming back to where I started in the reply, and what is the upshot of all of that for the appeal, well, in my submission, if the development, as it does here, grants planning permission for the extraction of the oil, then the question, what is an indirect effect of the development, in my submission is very clear, it would encompass the indirect effect from the burning of the oil releasing greenhouse gas emissions. Why is it indirect and not direct? Well, because the extraction of the oil is one causal element of what resulted in the greenhouse gas is being burned, but it's not the only one, that's why it's indirect.
Is it an indirect effect also of the refining process?
Potentially, but that doesn't cause difficulties.
Now, I'm not saying it does, I'm simply asking a question, and is it an indirect effect also of granting planning permission for a petrol filling station? Which will sell, which will sell the petrol?
Potentially, yes, direct, indirect, I suppose it would be indirect on my analysis because there would be some intervening process which would then cause the emissions to be emitted, answer yes.
Is it an indirect effect of a pipeline to connect one part of the infrastructure to another?
Yes, and there's no difficulty in this being an indirect effect of a number of different types of developments, and in fact, this question of, are there going to be double counting of emissions, which is where the question goes to, right, or there shouldn't be assessment at this stage because this might be double counting and the emissions might be assessed further down the line?
I wasn't asking that question, I was simply asking for your response as a matter of principle.
Yes, but I think it's important to address this difficulty, because it's one which is addressed in the international authorities, and the point is made of the international cases, definitely not authorities, the international cases, and the point is, the two points are made, first, the point of environmental impact assessment is to inform the decision-maker at that point in relation to the decision being made for them, it's not to give an overall inventory of greenhouse gases relating to a process, so it doesn't matter that they might be assessed here, and they might otherwise be assessed here, and they might otherwise be assessed here, in each instance, it's right for them to be assessed so the decision-maker at that stage can take an informed decision.
There might also be a difference between the extraction of oil and the other examples which the senior president has given, because the oil is where it is, you can't move it, your filling station could be built here, or it could be built there, or it could be somewhere else.
Yes, I think he's right that there is, that there is a difference between, I, there is, there is a difference, there must be a difference, between a planning permission, part of which is extracting the thing to be burned, and a planning permission down the line which may result in a process where the oil is to be burned, I see that there might be a difference, and that is in fact, a difference that would apply also to other examples, like in the steel industry, for example, if I'm constructing steel, you know, a wind turbine blade out of steel, that's very different from an extractive process where you're extracting the mineral to be burned. But there's, there's another difference in relation to this point about multiple impact assessing, and that is that at this point, it is only at this point that one will be assessing the entirety of the oil to be taken out of the ground by this planning permission, because it's not necessarily all going to be sent to the same refinery to be refined, it might be split up, it's not necessarily going to all be sent to the same petrol station to be pumped into cars. So there we are getting, here when the assessment is undertaken, it is undertaken at the earliest possible point for the whole of the oil that is to be removed from the ground, and there will be no other occasion upon which any similar assessment will be undertaken. My lords, with an eye on the time, I'll move on to just saying a couple of things about the various cases which were relied on, Mrs Townsend said yesterday that if the appellant's are correct, then Frackfree Rydell effectively is wrong, and Mr Elvin made submissions also about Frackfree Rydell this morning, and in my submission, that's not correct, because the Frackfree Rydell circumstance is very different from the circumstance that arises here, the relationship between the extraction in the Frackfree Rydell case and the control of emissions as a result of that extraction via the Natton plant is very different indeed from the circumstances here, and there was a good reason for the judge in Frackfree Rydell to be able to determine that there, it was justified as a result of the Natton plant and its permitting regime, it was justified to say that there would be no overall increase in emissions, that's not the circumstance here, and in my submission, it's not the mere fact of there being an intermediate step, which is what my honour friend, Mr Elvin, was relying on earlier in relation to Frackfree Rydell, it's not the mere fact of there being an intermediate step that led to the conclusion in the Frackfree Rydell case, it was the very specific nature of the permitting regime and the relationship between the extractive process, the extraction process, and the power plant that led to the conclusion in Frackfree Rydell. Turning to CAT.
So, yeah, my point really is to say that if the processing of the mineral off-site is regarded as not being an indirect effect of the extraction of the mineral, there would have been no need to consider whether there was or wasn't any increase in the total volume of gas being supplied, you've just said, well, that's all happening off-site, so that's the end of that.
My lord, turning on, moving on to CAT, my honour friend, Mrs Townsend, yesterday sought to distinguish CAT, because what she said was going on there was the need to assess the effects of the project, namely the comings and goings of the football fans, and in my submission, CAT is on exactly all fours with the analysis here, because in the same way as the development for the football stadium would have resulted in the comings and goings of football fans being affected, so here, the planning permission for extraction of oil has the indirect effect in relation to greenhouse gas emissions, and so we commend again paragraph seventy-two of CAT, which in our submission deals correctly with Abraham and the principle in Abraham and ecologistas, and is contrary in our submission to Mr Justice Holgate's approach, that's our ground two. My honour friend, for the Secretary of State, Mr Moore's drew the court's attention to Commission versus Spain and paragraph forty-nine, and it's of some relevance to note in that paragraph that it begins with a reference to the type of development, now that's partly because of the nature of the case in Commission versus Spain, but your lordships will see actually in the environmental impact regulations and in the directive, there is reference to a certain type of...
Yes, Mr Will has made that point yesterday.
Yes, types of development, regulation eighteen, three F, for example, and our submission is that for this type of fossil fuel development, it's wrong to define out indirect effects from the combustion, as is done, and indeed, it was perfectly feasible to assess them, and that's what should have happened. Two final points and a conclusion, just to highlight in terms of timing. The question was asked yesterday about the interaction between the test for EIA, test in broad terms, the question raised by EIA, and whether something is a material consideration. And as was touched on by the respondents, it is absolutely right that something might be a material planning consideration, even though it is not an aspect of the development which is required to be assessed or described in an environmental statement, but it's important to understand how something can be material but fall out with the environmental statement process. And in our submission, the most usual route by which this would happen is if the effects are simply not significant for the purposes of the EIA regime. for the purposes of the EIA regime but might still be material planning considerations to be taken into account in the planning analysis. So they wouldn't form part of the EIA regime because they're not required to because they're not significant in EIA terms. And then, of course, there might not be environmental effects at all. That's what I said yesterday in that regard. It is, I suppose, feasible to posit that there might be an environmental effect which is a material planning consideration but would fall out with the environmental statement or without with the EIA process. Although that's quite difficult. It's quite difficult to see how that would arise, given the extensive approach in the EIA directive and regulations, how much is covered and how broadly it is to be understood.
You do get cases, don't you, where the planning authority produces a screening opinion saying you don't need an EIA, but nonetheless, when the decision comes to be made, there are environmental factors taken into account?
Yes. And that's often, as I mentioned in the first aspect of this, because of a lack of significance.
Well, it's just simply not EIA development.
Or a mild...
But I mean, there... One needn't get into all the possibilities, but one can have... I mean, the small minority of development proposals are in fact EIA development.
Yes.
I don't know what the percentage is. It's a small percentage, I think. Conceivably, you could get EIA development, however, environmental effects of which are not significant but which are material considerations. That's possible in theory, at least. I mean, the point really goes no further than to identify the difference between the development consent process as such and the EIA process as such, incorporated as it is within the development consent process as a whole.
Yes.
But really, the point doesn't go any further than that.
There is a ramification of the point, if I may say so, in this appeal. And it is as follows. That it is... If the judgment is to be understood as saying that scope three emissions from fossil fuel development and/or oil development are not capable of amounting to indirect effects, if that's how the judgment is to be understood as a matter of law, then it is very difficult to see how something that is incapable of requiring an environmental impact analysis would at the same time be a material planning consideration to be taken into account. Because plainly, this opens the door to an argument that it wouldn't be rational for them to amount or for those emissions and their impact to amount to a material planning consideration, given that they're not even indirect effects of the development. And that's not just a theoretical difficulty. That is a practical difficulty which has already arisen. And I mentioned this yesterday, the Cumbria Coal Mine Inquiry. That is precisely one of the arguments that was put by the developer, that the greenhouse gas emissions, the scope three emissions, need not trouble the planning decision-maker at all because they aren't indirect effects of the development. And so how can it be rational or reasonable to say that they are also nevertheless material planning considerations? Obviously, the other side was put as well. Even though they might not be, they can amount to material planning considerations. And that's how I put the pragmatic difficulty yesterday, that one gets that distance. But if it is the case that the downstream emissions can never fall within the EIA regime, then in my submission, it creates considerable difficulties for them going on to say that they are also material planning, obviously, material planning considerations. My lord, I said two points. My last point is on ground four. And if I can split it into how Mrs Townsend and then how Mr Elvin dealt with ground four. Mrs Townsend dismissed ground little four, Roman four, on essentially the basis that there's no duty to give reasons and this is a reasons challenge, so it doesn't apply. But that's not right because EIA requires both direct and indirect effects to be described and assessed. And this environmental statement states very clearly that it was only looking at direct effects of greenhouse gas emissions, and the council accepted that. So what ground little Roman four goes to is whether the council's justification for that disclosed a lawful basis for excluding the indirect effects. It's not a reasons challenge. It's about whether there was a lawful basis for excluding those indirect effects. And that is also why the ground is not really about immaterial considerations either. Because using an unlawful justification for excluding a class of impacts is not the same as taking into account immaterial considerations. So if I could just, for your lordship's note, Mr Justice Holgate in paragraph one-two-nine of the judgment, that's CB seventy-seven, the final two sentences of that paragraph, expresses how he understands the council's careful, justified not taking into account indirect effects. And turning that up, I've got one-two-nine, the last two sentences. He says, "It's plainly ES did not rely on lack of control or the existence of other regulatory regimes to justify the non-assessment." But in my submission, that's simply not a true... That's a... Well, that's not a true reflection of what the ES and the ES review actually said.
So you say this is a misreading?
This is either a misreading or it is a very benevolent understanding of what happened in light of how the judge, in his analysis, understands the essential character of the proposed development. And Mr Elvin, in fact, Mr Elvin's submission this morning was that officers accepted the review which accepted the ES paras one-two-one to one-two-two. And that's not really what's reflected. That's my submission is that's not what's reflected in my one-two-nine. Just to be very clear on to Mr Elvin's submissions that are... that chime with this ground. First of all, the... Mr Elvin took the court through the officer's report and indeed, of the sections that weren't in the bundle, which are the bit at the front and the paragraphs in the eventual conclusion. There's nothing in any of that or indeed, anything that was brought to the court's attention from the officer's report that is proffered as a reason for excluding the downstream emissions from the environmental impact assessment process. So the conclusion, for example, on need and on the regime around climate change and how it hadn't changed, none of that was given as a reason for excluding assessing the downstream emissions, either at the time or in the ES or by the council. And my learned friend, Mr Elvin, then, touched upon what was and wasn't raised by the objectors. And just to make it absolutely plain, because a sort of Gathercole-type point was made in the High Court, that this appellant didn't raise issues around the impact, the emissions, the assessment of emissions at the time. And that didn't... wasn't pursued because the Wield Action Group and indeed, this appellant did raise issues around the underestimation of greenhouse gas emissions. And just for your note, if you look at SB sixty-one in the middle of that page, you'll see what was said to the committee by Miss Elcote on the Wield Action Group part.
Sorry, sixty-one?
Sixty-one.
Mr Elvin's... Everett's third bullet point.
Yes, it's the third bullet point where Miss Elcote is referred to.
Oh, yes. It is underrepresented, really. What does that mean?
My lord, in... Well, as I understand it, in light of having also read in more detail, which is in the bundle, the objection that was made, it's... It means that they... Well, it says what it says. They hadn't probably been taken into account or understood or... But I don't understand anybody to be making a Gathercole-type argument that this appellant didn't raise the point early enough and so it isn't a valid point. So my final point. If the court could please have opened the appellant's skeleton, the replacement skeleton, the main one, at paragraph seventeen, the court will see there that we set out the recitals of the 2014 directive. Not in the bundle of authorities, I might add, but the recitals are set out there in our skeleton. And Mrs Townsend referred yesterday to paragraph twelve of Mr Justice Holgate's judgment and the nature of the court's role in cases of this type, i.e. focusing on resolving questions of law. And that is plainly an absolute of the case. But care must be taken to ensure that this emphasis on the nature of the court's role does not blunt the import of the instrument which is in issue here. In the case of the EIA directive and the regulations, these legal instruments are in place for a very clear purpose, part of which is explicitly acknowledged in these recitals to the 2014 directive. "Climate change has become more important as an element in the decision-making process", says the recital. "Climate change will continue to cause damage to the environment and compromise economic development. So it is appropriate to assess the impact of development projects on the climate." That properly, in my submission, informs the court's understanding of the legal regime in play. This is not a submission that climate change gets some sort of special treatment or is a special case. It's simply that the impacts of climate, as with the impacts of other things, like biodiversity, for example, are important and must be assessed because of the ramifications of those impacts for people and for the planet. So it's not diverging into the impermissible realm of policy or politics to interpret the EIA regime in a way that recognizes the harm caused by climate change and therefore, the importance placed by the EIA regime on giving decision-makers information about greenhouse gas emissions and their impacts.
Yeah.
My lords, unless there's anything further, those are my submissions.
Yes, thank you very much.
And my lord, apologies. Are you going to ask...
Yeah.
My lord, Lord Justice Limblon, a question. I was just going to say, we had a slight spat about evidence and the admissibility of it. The learned judge addresses the evidence in the last three paragraphs or an ultimate paragraph of his judgment. And I'm not going to take... I'm not going to ask you to read it now, but you will see that he comments on the plethora of evidence that was put in by both parties. But those are our submissions. Thank you.
Thank you. Right. Thank you all very much for your very interesting submissions. It's given us a lot to think about. I think I can say that I am pleased I gave permission to appeal. It's been a very interesting case.
So we will delight.
Whatever the outcome. So you will get a draft judgment in due course in the usual way, which will be your opportunity to correct English, but not our reasoning. And we would hope that in the light of the draft judgment, you will be able to agree a form of order.